Phipps?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Calderon?
Here.
Rediger?
Here.
Straley?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Section three, three point one, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
And I heard, was it Straley?
Yep.
And Calderon?
Yes.
Phipps?
Aye.
Bryant?
Here.
Saunders?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Alright, section three point two, um, action item from closed session. Um, can I get a motion to approve the dismissal of employee discussing closed session?
So moved, second.
Um, first. Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Section four, four point one is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Seeing none, section five, consent agenda items. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull or any conversation? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
I have Calderon?
Yes.
And then?
No, no, it was Ann.
Ann, sorry. And then, uh, Murphy?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Alright, section six, personnel consent agenda items. Um, is there anything that anyone would like to pull or any conversation? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Hello, Rediger.
Murphy, second.
Thank you, I have Rediger and then Murphy. Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Section seven, new business, seven point one is B C E F donation.
Hello, I am Megan Johnson, I am the president of the Baucham Educational Foundation. And we are here to seek approval for you to accept our donation of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No, thanks for the work you guys do, um, to support the district. Always appreciate, I know that a lot of work goes into your fundraising events. And so thanks for, um, your volunteer hours in putting all those events together. And, um, really appreciate this great donation that will help support our some programs.
Last though, I hope to see you guys Saturday at backyard bash, it's rain or shine.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve, um, the existence of that donation?
I'll move, Laura.
I'll second, Straley.
Thank you. Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Section seven point two is a B O S donation to C E S.
I will share what I know, I thought we were going to have someone present tonight, but maybe they got hung up. So, um, they had, no? No, there was, um, a shop and gift campaign and people nominated, um, uh, recipients. And Chatham Elementary was the third place winner for a thousand dollars. And so following board policy, donations over five hundred dollars need to be accepted by the board. So there's a recommendation to accept the thousand dollar donation from the Bank of Springfield.
Any questions, comments on the board? Alright, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Bryant.
Second, Rediger.
Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
I have to abstain because my appointment is with Bank of Springfield.
And, uh, Saunders?
Yes, thank you.
Um, seven point three is the second reading of the press policies. Does anyone have any questions, comments, anything they'd like to pull? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright Bryant?
Yes.
I'll second, Straley.
Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Section eight, eight point one is the opening of the F Y twenty-five budget hearing. So can I get a motion to, um, approve the opening of the hearing?
So moved. Phipps?
Phipps? Second, Rediger.
Rediger. Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Alright, so the budget hearing is open and Wendy is here to answer any questions if anyone has any questions about the budget. As noted, there have been no changes to last month's presentation. Hearing none?
I guess I just say, I'm a man of the president, I, I just want to make the note that we deal with a lot of these issues in our, our monthly finance committee meetings. And so just didn't want the lack of questions to be misinterpreted or the lack of interest to acquire questions in general. Because most of the time it's hashed out during the finance committee meetings, so just wanted to make that point.
Alright, thank you. Alright, eight point two is then to close the F Y twenty-five budget hearing, can I get a motion to close budget hearing?
So moved, Rediger.
Second, Murphy.
Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Section eight point three is now needs to approve, um, the F Y twenty-five budget, um, as presented and submitted as the. Can I get a motion to approve the budget?
So moved, Calderon?
Second, Phipps.
Phipps?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Rediger?
Yes.
Straley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Section nine, nine point one is the safety and security update.
Good evening. Meetings are fast. Okay, um, instead of an annual report, I, I decided to do an update. Because I want to talk about some of the stuff that's, uh, currently going on right now. And I think it's more important that some of the stuff that we've done in the past, and we've gotten a lot accomplished, but we have some new things that I want to share with you. Most of you know about this, just kind of go over the highlights. It should take more than an hour, hour and a half. Next please, this is my official checker, I don't worry. Uh, we added, as part of our upgrade to the district security platform, we added panic buttons. Panic buttons are located in each of the schools, there's two. Uh, every school has them in the main office, except G E S has one in their hallway. That's a hallway that's heavily traveled by the gymnasium and cafeteria, so they requested that, that's where we put it. We have cover over it so the kids can't reach it, and accidentally press it, since if they do, the police are gonna come, but, um, it's in a, it's in a good spot for them. Uh, cameras in the schools are all operational. I think at the last meeting that I wasn't here and talked, that I might have talked about the R F P for some additional cameras. A little over a hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna hopefully use it to fight safety funds. Maybe some money from Wendy. So, um, those are in the, in the process of being purchased. That'll cover five schools and we'll do some fill-ins for some schools that we didn't buy cameras for in the past. Uh, our security film was installed, uh, the first of the school year, that was a project we started last year. Um, I won't go into any more detail than that, but it's, it's installed in the buildings. The crisis management templates that, uh, the committee I'm on with Becca and some others, uh, is almost complete. We've added a few new items, so I thought I had it done, and then she gave me territory to do it, so I'm still, in fact, I'm working on one tomorrow to finish it up. Uh, next please. Back to the panic button. The way these work, when the button is pushed, there's a thirty-second announcement. And it, uh, the announcement is locked down, uh, please proceed to safety. All the, all the kids and all the schools have heard it, they know what they're supposed to do. After thirty seconds, it stops. Uh, main entrances are, are locked. There's an automatic dial for nine-one-one, which also goes to Chatham PD. So there's no need for anybody to pick up a phone, call the police, they're automatically on the way. And the security administration both get text messages letting us know that the alarm had been set. I have the, uh, safety structures in, in the, in each building tied into these. So if we get a, a panic button alert at the high school, um, security people at G E S know there's a problem. Shoot across the parking lot and maybe help out, but all the other four schools are also now. Next please. The Stop the Bleed Project was started in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-four. We facilitated training for over a hundred staff and, uh, basically taught them how to use targets, uh, how to use pressure points. Uh, we wanted to teach not only just the teachers, but custodians, bus drivers, cooks. Anybody that might come across a, a child or an adult that's had an accident in the school and is bleeding, uh, to try to, to stop it till help was summoned. Training was put on by H S H S. I have an employee who used to work for H S H S, so he has facilitated a lot of the interaction for us. Good department, which I appreciate. We ordered, uh, sixty kits, distributed ten kits to each of the schools. And the kits include a combat tourniquet, pressure dressing, scissors, a hypothermia blanket, and instruction on how to use the equipment inside the kit. We've also added, uh, Narco can nasal spray to all of our A D D boxes in each of the buildings for, there's a drug overdose. If you go to the next slide, this is, is an example of what Chatham Elementary has done, where they've hung these, uh, kits up in their building. I suggested, I sent this to the other schools, suggested they do something similar. Some of the heavily trafficked locations, uh, one by the exit door, the one by the front exit door. The nurse, uh, also has a couple of these kits, so places where they could grab the bag in a hurry and have all the materials ready. Next please. Okay, th- this is what I really wanted to talk about tonight, um, the other stuff was important, I wanted to go over this with you. Our reunification plan, uh, has been in the process, I have one that was started in twenty twenty-four, it was actually a year before that, we, we started talking about it. We are responsible for the kids, not just in the school, but we move them, obviously. And we have to be able to account for them. So what we did is we flipped it some locations that would hold our students. And we based the locations we picked on the population of the school. For instance, the high school, we'd have to use Cherry Hills because of the number of students. Uh, we also have an M O U with U I S that will house more than one school if we had to. If we had a tornado come through Chatham and knock all the schools out, uh, knock out some of the trinkets that we use. So, we got these M O Us set, we've been to the, uh, locations, I've looked at them. We walked a couple of them, but not with all the staff, uh, which is something we need to get done in October. And we're gonna start, uh, drills in the fall of this year. We're planning some training for our admin in October. What I want to do is spend about an hour, hour and a half with two schools at a time, and then come to one location. Train together with, uh, myself, our security staff, police and fire, our SEMA volunteers. And just walk through a, a, a scenario, an exercise, a, a tabletop demonstration of what you, what you would do if you had a problem in your building. Where would you, where would you want to go? I mean, that's probably gonna be a call that I'm gonna make, but I'm gonna do it in conjunction with, with my admin. Where do you think we should go? Um, how many buses can we get and how fast can we get them? We, I did a survey with our bus director, transportation director, to determine how many kids you could put on a bus based upon each school. Some schools will require more buses than others because there's more kids. Um, and the survey we took was for kids to be seated. In a true emergency, they're probably gonna be standing there, but we cram them in there to get them out of the building as fast as we can. Not everything that we evacuate for is gonna be something horrible. It, it won't always be a shooter, it won't always be a tornado, it won't always be some deranged other person. It may be a water main break, it may be a train derailment, G, G E S is, uh, an hydroponium train, we need to get the kids out, so. Those types of, that's, that's, we'll still use this plan, but we may not go into the detail we would if we had an active crime scene in a building where we had to get everybody out and couldn't go back for some period of time. Um, so what we're using is a plan that's based on a company called I Love You Guys. Uh, there was a shooting in two thousand and six in a high school in Colorado. A little girl was killed and she had texted her parents and said, "I, I love you guys." And in two thousand and twelve, uh, this became a, a national, uh, campaign project. The foundation was established, it's been used by thousands of schools all over the United States and Canada. They give us the materials for free, there's no charge, uh, they ask that we, uh, mention them and let, let people know that Chatham is on the school, using our materials, which we, which we have done. And it's, it's just, it's a, it's an amazing, uh, set of materials and projects and things that we can do based upon you name it, to arrive at a reunification site and be ready to go. And as I said earlier, accountability is the issue. Next slide please. I'm not taking on this, this slide, this was in, uh, Georgia recently. Uh, the kids were sent to the football field. Some of them were walking off, some of the parents were walking on, taking the kids out. Uh, there was, there they, at this point, they knew who the staff was, so there wasn't a concern with that. But as I said, we, we are in charge of the kids and, and you can't keep traffic something like that. A parent shows up, says, "Where's my son?", and you don't have him, there's a problem, so. That's why we're going to this, the detail that we've gone to with this, uh, new procedure. You did that, tell me asking, that's good. Sorry, my page, you moved. These are some of the venues that we have M O Us with for, uh, each of the schools. As I said earlier, one would, uh, high schools, Cherry Hills and Perry Hills alone, because it's the biggest school, they can hold the most people. I've been out there with, uh, the admin from G E S and with the high school admin, where I agree a couple of his A Ps. And walked it, determined where we put the kids, we have a map of the, of the church, where we put the special needs kids, where the nurse would go with her supplies. I mean, that's, that's an excellent facility and we would probably use it more often than not. Uh, for convenience sake, some of these places which are closer, we'd probably use first if we had the choice. Save the buses unless it's snowing or raining, so for instance, Ball Elementary, you can walk across the street to Sugar Creek. Uh, C E S could walk down to the reception center, they also have a agreement with the church there in, in Chatham. So, you know, if we eliminate the, the school bus, we will, but nine times out of ten, we won't be able to, and we won't have to get the kids off on a bus and, and get them out. Also, uh, the high school in particular, um, and we have drivers. And keeping the kids in the building and not running out to the cars could, could be a problem. So if the school is a active crime scene, whether it's inside or out, we'll be doing our best to keep them from leaving. So we'll have a, a lot of extra kids, not just the non-drivers, but the drivers being moved out by bus. I have a short video, I promise, it's only four minutes, to panic over what this is about, and I'll fill in a couple blanks for you.
Reunification is a method by which we safely get students reconnected with their parents and reunify them. The standard reunification method was actually created by the I Love You Guys Foundation. A reunification happens whenever the school or the building is no longer safe to be in. And so it can be any situation, it can be a water main break, it could be a loss of power, a severe weather event, any of those situations could result in reunification. As soon as we're notified of reunification and we know where the students will be staged and where parents need to be, we will send out a text message through our communication center dispatch there.
So you want that to go on now, yes? Turn still back and on, eight fifty-eight.
The most important thing a parent can do when an incident is starting, or you get notified of something happening at your student's school, is just to be patient and wait for direction from the school district or the school about next steps. You don't want to approach the school as it is potentially in an unsafe situation. And as soon as the district or the school has the appropriate information, then you know where to go. The most important thing for us, while students are in our care, is that they're having as much stress-free time as possible. So that means we're entertaining them, we have movies playing, they are the trusted adults, we have EMS, fire, police, we have student nurses, social emotional liaisons, we have social workers, directors of student sports services. All those pieces are accounted for and we're all here working together to make sure that students are safe and feel safe. Once the parent's notified of reunification and where to go, they'll arrive on site. They'll probably see a line of parents already, or they might be the first ones there. The biggest thing is that they're gonna make sure that they have a valid I D on them. Um, they'll get in line, there will be a person managing the line and will hand them a card. The card will fill out with their student's information, their information, and then they'll move through the line and where to get to the next one. A guardian or parent that's coming to reunification should make sure that they have a valid I D. And that can be a registered license, a state issued I D, anything with a name and a picture. While the students are in our care, it's our responsibility to make sure that they're safe. And until we reunify that student with their parent, they're our responsibility. Accountability is really important in this situation and we want to make sure that each student is accounted for and that every parent gets the right student. Staff will verify that the student is on site and ready to be reunified. We'll call for that student and as a parent moves down the line, the student is called over. So we make sure that we're calling the right student up, that the student feels safe going with a person that's there to pick them up. At the very last spot, they will be reunified with their parent and final checkout will be with the principal. So this process may take up some time, but it's gonna ensure that your student is safe and that we get them to you safely. There are a lot of situations where a student may not be able to take their vehicle home after an incident, whether that be because there's, um, a gas leak in the area, or an active crime scene, or the, uh, traffic is blocked off. A student who drives may need to be reunified off-site with the rest of their peers. It's important to set up a system with your student when an emergency happens around how often you will text each other, whether that be every ten minutes to check in, or even longer than that. But the most important thing is that we keep networks clear for emergency notification. The most prompt and accurate way to make sure that you're being notified of incidents like a reunification is to ensure that you're following your district's procedure to update your contact information. The only way you'll get the most up-to-date information is if your contact information is up-to-date, as well as that you're opted into any text messaging that's available through your district. Your child's safety is our number one priority and we want to make sure that this process is a positive one for both the parent and the student.
Okay, um, so this process is gonna require a couple things on the administration's part. I'm gonna be doing most of the proper things, Becca's help, of course. But we're gonna have, um, we're called go boxes, materials that this organization recommends that we take. We've added some things to the boxes, primarily it's, um, identification supplies for the kids. We have picture books with the kid from each school, nurse information if the child has a, an A P P I N or some other sort of place to be to have medicines with them. Posters, um, folders, it's a, a variety of things in these boxes that will be pulled in on a cart. And what happens when the, we get to the site, we'll have tables set up with signs on them. We'll have a group of, uh, staff, will be greeters, and the greeters will be the ones that meet the, uh, parents as they come in. Have the parents fill out their reunification card, make sure they have their I D with them. And they'll go to another table where there'll be checkers, the checkers check the paperwork, make sure that the student and the parent information matches. Then it goes to what I call a runner, they call reunifiers, they take the documents from the checkers, go back to where we have the kids located, bring the kids up. And then a final accountant is a person by the exit door who checks everything to make sure we have the right student with the right parent. It, it seems like a lot, and I, I think some of the staff are concerned, but I think they're gonna be okay after we get a couple of trainings under our belt. I know the principals, once they get their taste of this, will be much more comfortable and then we'll leave some discussions in our buildings. What I'd like to do after the principals are done is set up a reunification sign in the gymnasium at each school. Have the staff come in, decide who's gonna play what role, and just show them what it would be like if you got called that day to, to participate. And I, I think they'll be, I think they'll be fine. So that's October, um, November. And I have some, um, and I've got a whole lot of detail, I have some folders for you. That's got the plan in it, how they're, they're colored, very nice. And I can explain this more in detail if you have any, any questions or concerns. You can go on the spreadsheet. Okay. I put this up here because I'm, I'm asked frequently, what are you, what are we doing to keep everybody safe? And what we need to be buying and purchasing and looking at? And every time there's something that happens, you know, initially, there's a lot of interest, uh, in the public and also the people that, that I work with, law enforcement and other, other folks. And then after a few weeks, you know, it kind of ties down a little bit. So we're not, we're not gonna be panic, uh, buyers, we can only harden the schools so much. If, if someone wants to get in and do something, they're probably gonna do it. Our goal is to make it difficult to slow them down, intercept them. And by that, I mean having a buzzer system to get in, having a human being with eyes on the person, uh, having this, uh, glass reinforced, having automatic locks. Security, have a security person in every school, and then our panic buttons. And we can, you know, you have your wrist and you have your, your threats, how prepared are we if it actually does happen, what do we do? And I, that's what I try to educate people with, is a combination of both of these. But planning and education, which I think this communication plan is gonna be, will, uh, will give people confidence to work through some of this stuff and not be petrified, I hope, and scared to death. If we, you know, you, if you practice something and then something happens, you revert to your training subconsciously. Uh, police officers do it, firemen do it, it's ingrained in them, you don't have to stop and think, "What do I do?", you know what to do, you, you practiced it over and over and over. So that's, that's the goal, that's what we're trying to do with this and with, with other things we're doing, but that's the, that's the main goal of this process. This plan is not perfect, the day that something happens, for, I told the principals, we're gonna have screw-ups. Uh, we're gonna have buses that maybe don't start in the winter, or not enough drivers. Uh, the person you had as a greeter is gonna be sick, you have to use somebody else for another building, or somebody from the deal is gonna have to show up. And the plan is not in place, so if something happens tomorrow, we're gonna, we're gonna punt, we're gonna fake it, we'll get through it, but it, it will be in place shortly. Any questions on this cheerful topic?
In terms of the, the places that they will go, what type of security will be at those places? In terms of the, the places that they will go, what type of security will be at those places?
We'll have police officers everywhere.
Okay.
And if there's, if there's not an, an emergency at the place that we left, where they have to have a crime scene investigation, say it's a, a gas leak or, as they said, a water main break, the police will be there helping to stop traffic, they'll be inside. Um, I anticipate parents not showing up with, uh, I Ds. So, uh, we ordered signage yesterday and we ordered extra signage, said, "Please have your I D ready." We're gonna have that on every placard, every sign leading up the sidewalk and once you get inside. And what I'd like to do, you agree, is to share this with the parents, you know, ahead of time, so they know. If something happens, make sure your Skyward information is updated, so they know who you are and can come get your child. And make sure you have your information with you. And there'll be, you know, there'll be some situations where people that know these parents, because they come in their schools, will know them. But I, I won't know them, I might be stuck doing this greeting thing myself. So you need to have your I D with you, that's paramount. We gotta be able to mask the kid with the adult.
That was, I think that was my question too, um, or comment or maybe not suggestion. But, um, you said people revert back to their training and it's gonna just be really important to get the parents the information that they need now when we're like not in a situation of panic? And so I did have a question, two full question. One about, uh, uh, I think greater clarity about the timeline for implementation, because you did say training is happening like kind of in October. Um, even if it's not completely done, just giving us a bit of a ballpark for when we can expect the buildings to have been trained is one. And then two, what's the kind of rollout for, um, parent, um, training? What, what will that look like? Is it virtual? Are we bringing parents in? Are we just communicating through seven times seven ways, which is the best way to do it? Um, but just giving the board a little bit more, um, information that can help us understand when we should expect people to have the information they need to carry this out?
I asked, uh, a couple of the principals when they'd be available to do this. And I said, "If we put two buildings together and I can train two schools at once, speed things up, will that help?" And they said yes. Um, and Elizabeth told me twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth of, I know you said there's parent teacher conferences, but, uh, of October. Um, so we wanted to train two schools at a time over three days, the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth of October. And I'd like to get the first school's, uh, reunification model staff together in a gymnasium of the following week or the first of November. Um, as far as the rollout to the parents, I don't think this video is, is offensive. I think they could look at something like this. Um, I would lean on Danny and, and Becca to determine how the best to do this, but I'm open to suggestions. I mean, we need to let them know what we're doing, where we're going. They need to know ahead of time, um, where the locations might be that their kids will be located at. We're not gonna tell them that we get the kids there, but, I mean, they need to know that, so.
Also, just, it should be in, in, for you, this is annual communication, you know?
Oh, yeah.
People have to be reminded of at least once a year, um, if not more often than that. A lot of people won't remember their I D, that's gonna, the I D thing's gonna be a problem. But I understand the, the reason for it.
Yeah, probably registration and then the, you know, the principal send letters out to their, their families a couple times a year. Just one little notifications and be a good time to mention again. Now, don't forget what we're gonna do if you have to leave your, your school and take your child with us. Be prepared. The Skyward and the, the Skyward notification of who can pick up your son or daughter and the I D is paramount. I mean, even if it's your neighbor, put him in the Skyward, let them look it up and let them, let them take him. Grandma, whatever it is. Any other questions? Do you think it'll work?
People are gonna struggle.
Yeah.
In a panic situation, it's gonna be chaos everywhere. But the more training you have, easier it is.
And we can't do it, we can't do it on that football field. We can't, we can't do that in mass.
Do we have the ability to do, I mean, this is highly disruptive, so I'm saying this up front. But to do drills, 'cause I mean, this is even gonna take students to be able to calmly follow this kind of process and mechanism too. And I know we're doing a lot of drills, so I am prefacing this, this comment with that. But if we agree and we're arguing that this is a really important preparedness thing, um, does it make sense to do a drill for this?
Since I've been here, we've done a drill with the students out of Cherry Hills.
Okay.
Uh, with the buses, with the students, with the department, the police blocking the roads. And that was the last one we did. It is a lot of planning and work.
It's a lot of work, I acknowledge that.
And I've had the biggest, the biggest complaint I get, and I get it, I'm not an educator, but they are. You know, you're taking away education time.
Absolutely, I'm acknowledging that.
In the middle of the day to get on a school bus and pretend that we're having a problem. So I understand that.
And, and I wanna also say, I, I'm of two minds, I think a pre- preparedness is really important. And I'm just also really, I think saddened that we have to like do that as well. Like even all the lock active shooter drills, I hate that students have to do that. And they're happening like every day. So it's like, how do you, um, you know, d- we don't, we don't wanna get so desensitized that we think it's never gonna happen to us and then we're never preparing for it. Um, so I do acknowledge that I, I'm like of two minds, it's a really saddened state that we're in and I want kids to be safe and to make it home, so.
Well, I'm, I'm a realist and, you know, we have changed the active shooter drills since I've been here and, and for the better. We used to get really carried away with them and they were frightening. So, you know, now that the parents are given a, a notice ahead of time if they want their child to participate or not, to opt out or get a waiver for the day or excused absence, whatever the case may be, uh, so that their child does not have to go through the drill. My thinking of something happens, I want my kid to know what to do. But that's just, that's just me, but we, we respect that and honor that. Uh, the same thing with our fire drills, we tell the, the, uh, buildings, including staff and kids, they have a time when the drill is gonna be. The drills are, the alarms are loud, they're running outside, it's disruptive. Um, especially for the kids that, you know, have special needs and can't deal with a whole lot of noise or, uh, issues that they're gonna experience because of the disruption of the building. So, you know, you, you do what you can without upsetting people and making it worse. And you can definitely make it worse, I mean, scare people so they have to, they shut down. And we don't wanna do that. So one of the good things in Chicago, which kind of gave us was the waiver for parents and the startup there.
Do we have a quick access to bus drivers in the middle of the day?
Uh, when we had our, uh, last meeting, I think it was last week, uh, Mark said that he could get six or seven drivers that are on notice. And some, a couple of those maybe mechanics working out at the shop, I don't know.
Right, and the office staff.
And his office staff, he drives, the office staff drive. You're supposed to have a C D open to drive the bus, so, you know, they're in.
And he's also reached out to Springfield Mass Transit too, to provide support in emergency to us and working on an M O U with them as well.
He's doing that, I'm not, I'm helping with it, but that's, that's his deal.
In partnership.
Yes. I, yes, that's his, that's his responsibility. Thank God. Any other questions about this? I will keep you posted through the superintendent of, but, uh, what we're doing, however, move along. We'll go from there. Hopefully, I think, as I said before, all this training, all this money we're spending, all this stuff we're doing in these schools, I hope we never have to use it.
Us too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brother, thank you.
All right, nine point two is our future board meeting dates on Wednesday, October ninth at four. The facilities and grounds committee will meet here. Um, on Tuesday, October fifteenth at four. Finance committee will meet here. On Wednesday, October twenty-third at six thirty is our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Um, on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, both the D E I committee and the finance committee, or sorry, policy committees will meet at four and five-thirty respectively.
I think there was one correction. Pat, did you guys move your meeting?
Sure.
Did you move your meeting with the facilities meeting?
I don't think so.
I think for homecoming, that's the night of homecoming.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
So that they did not get trapped in this building. It's the eighth, I think, V eight, yes.
There we go. Tuesday, October eighth is the correct date, facilities and grounds. Section nine point three is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any topic. Hearing that, I just wanted to share one thing. We're trying a new system tonight for, um, getting the board vote. And so that's why there's a little bit of delay and calling out things. So I just wanna call that out for the audience here and anyone who might view this video, um, once it is on YouTube, that is what is happening today. All right, section ten, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you so much.